I'd leave it to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Karen just sent me a message. She says she's in the waiting room for Zoom.
I don't see her as an attendee or in the panelist list. She doesn't have any, she can just go to the link on the website, the board page, and then I'll see her under attendees and can let her in.
Okay, I do want to announce that this meeting is being recorded. The recording does not constitute the official record of this meeting. I should have said that before. Any revisions to the agenda? Public comment on agenda items? Move on to accept approval for the amendments of the last meeting. Move over the amendments.
A second.
All in favor? If you were saying aye. 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 Opposed? As unanimously. Any recommendations or recommendations? A recommendation, sorry. Okay, start with your report, Dustin.
So I handed that out at the beginning of the meeting. Just enrollment again, so now we're looking at 389 for the fall. That's just about to the student where we were at this last school year. From the, on the recruiting front, we have two certified by positions. We're looking to get across the finish line and we're hopeful to have these in July. The housing project, I think we were kind of chatting about it before. They're preparing the building for lease or rent application currently. I'll let everyone know and that's going to be once we get an appointment with the commissioners. And then if we need some additional firepower for public comment, we can do that. And then, you know, just the grants update. Big Sky Resort area tax district, I think we've already talked about this, but 375,000 for housing and 50K for the 4K programming. Spanish Peaks, 120, 100 for extracurricular and 20 grand for our expedition costs in the fall. Moonlight Club Community Foundation, 13,250 for food program. Since the last meeting, Corky and I did have a meeting with a board member of the Moonlight Club Community Foundation. So we might kind of start to reengage with them to get some additional grants in the next cycle. And then YCCF, I'm still waiting on. The ask was for 150 for health and wellness, which encompasses a lot of things, our food program, mental health and campus safety, and then 375 for housing. I feel pretty confident in those amounts, but I think July 1st is the announcement on those numbers.
Is that the only one? Are any of those guaranteed yet or?
All but the YCCF.
And then will the YCCF cover all Doherty's salary benefits?
That's how we put it in.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we wrote it out pretty close to that.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, and then the other piece of that is they used to have two separate entities. Entities isn't the right word. They had a sub grant that was specifically around mental health that we received $50,000 a year from one of our counselors. So that's also part of this. And then, you know, to supplement the food programming so we can continue the lunches for staff.
Great. Questions? Any else, sorry.
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Hi, Marlo.
Hi. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we are just, we wrapped up last school year, the 23-24 school year, and we've started working as we prepare for next school year. So just kind of all those end of the year items. Report cards were sent out last year, last week. The last week of school, we had our move up and transition days for incoming sixth graders and our incoming ninth graders. And then we also emailed out to parents to share kind of the information whenever with the students on that. And then we sent out summer work so we can prevent the summer slide. And then kind of from the student life perspective, we had an excellent 2024 graduation with all of our seniors. It was a huge crowd and really nice to see all the community members, families and faculty there supporting them and great speakers and just a lot of fun. I thought that EBS did such a nice job of covering the ceremony too. So we're really grateful for that. Middle school had their field day to end the year and eighth graders are our leaders for that. We had to transition indoors, so that was kind of exciting to have the whole middle school spread out. And the eighth graders really showed adaptability, leadership and responsibility. So I'm so excited for this class to come into ninth grade. They're just gonna, they're gonna take over the high school. And then we had our traditional grade eight promotion ceremony. And it's a nice way to just mark that transition for students. And it's historical for our school, so it's nice to keep that going. And then I always just want to give a big shout out again to Heather Morris for organizing that slideshow. It's a crowd favorite. We have a new student council in the high school and we've already started working on homecoming. So our president's Maddie Brown, our vice president is Finn McCray, secretary is Frieda Fobozzi and our treasurer is Oliver Maguire. And I really look forward to working with this group. And then we have our yearbook is in print and we should be ready to distribute those sometime in July. And it's really an outstanding yearbook this year. Ms. Bedoin and the yearbook team really put together an amazing group. I mean, sorry, amazing book. And then lastly, we're just preparing for the next school year. Anita and I are doing all the work that we need to get done. So that's it.
Awesome. Well, hopefully you get a little downtime.
Oh, for sure.
Awesome. Thanks, Marlo. Do you have anything for Brittany?
I do. She was hopeful to call in, but obviously was unable to. Fifth grade exhibition was a big success. Aspiring astronauts, first female president, inventions and backflips. This is really a time when the passion of the students can come alive. So good job to Mr. Ballard and Ms. Camper for all the hard work. We had a great finish to the school year here in the elementary. The last week of the school year, move up day for all students to visit the next classroom, data review meetings with classroom teachers by the student support team, field day hosted by fifth graders, kindergarten promotion, graduation was a success. Fifth graders final walk in the halls, shared on by students, teachers and parents, fifth grade breakfast, goodbye parade at dismissal. And then over the summer, a team of teachers will be attending PYP training in Tahoe from the 29th to 22nd. Excited about the opportunity to develop the skills and knowledge and give a thanks to the donor who's supporting that. Summer reading camp begins July 1st and runs through August 13th. She may adjust those dates depending on the training on August 1st and 2nd. But we'll talk a little bit more about that when we have those hires. But summer reading starts the first, or the July 1st. And then also I'll add for Brittany, we do have the United, Greater Gallatin United Way Small Kid Camp on campus started yesterday for three and four year olds. And it looked to me like there were 16 of them, but I know that they had more registered, so.
How long does that go for?
I think they're gonna go right up until almost when school starts. So really, we just provide the facility for that. They have all the employees and everything else.
It's also set all day?
It is all day. I mean, they were here yesterday at 8:00 and they were still here late in the afternoon.
Okay, great. Thank you. DP Coordinator, Mr. Sullivan?
Thanks. Would you like to talk about handbook when we do discussion and action?
Maybe when we do it then.
I'll wait till then then. But I really only have one thing I want to highlight during my report today. The IB, the organization itself occasionally publishes some research studies that are conducted about the programs. And they recently highlighted one that was conducted this year. And I wanted to just take an opportunity to share some of the findings and briefly summarize some of that for the board today. And Andrew's got the study up to pull up here. So in summary, this study was published by National Clearinghouse in January 2024. For those of you unfamiliar, the National Clearinghouse is a trusted source of administrative records for post-secondary institutions. About 97% of post-secondary students are accounted for with that organization. And so what we were, what this study was able to survey was by using the data provided by the IB so that they could match students who have taken the program with, you know, these students in post-secondary institutions. They looked at post-secondary institution enrollment, persistence during their enrollment, and then graduation outcomes at those post-secondary institutions for students who participated in the IB diploma program, either as full candidates, as course candidates, whether they received it or not, just students who are doing a program like Integroarch students would be here at junior, senior year. And so with this data, they were able to identify about 50,000 students in the cohort who graduated from high school in 2016. The reason they use that date, and this is backlogged to 2016, was they wanted to study up to six years of outcomes and so they could see students who did two-year institutions, four years, or who maybe did all the way through six years at one institution to complete it. And then through the findings, there are several findings. So first for immediate enrollment, this is the graph that's on the slide right now. 74% of all DP students, and again, when I say that, this is anybody who participated in IB coursework and then sat for exams for any sort of measurement metric there. 74% of those students attended post-secondary institutions immediately after graduation, compared to 64% nationally, so about 10% improvement there. Following that, and we can skip ahead to the next graph here. One thing they noted as well is for the, where students were attending, it broke it down by all DP students and then, you know, into the respective categories where students were attending. And we're seeing that out of, for all DP students, most of these students, you know, approximately 40% of them are attending selective institutions, pursuing them. And even students who are, who are what we've called like course candidates or just enrolled in IB classes, but maybe not taking the full diploma program. And we're still seeing about a third of those students attending selective institutions, which is notable. And then let's.
Maybe Tim, can you just for?
Yeah, of course.
Can you just tease out like what's more selective, selective and inclusive?
Yes, good. So in the study, they've identified selective as being in the, really like the top fifth of institutions that are based on SAT and ACT scores as well as the actual enrollment or acceptance there. The middle, the selective was the middle two fifths of institutions based again on SAT or ACT scores reported as well as the acceptance there. The inclusive universities were really in that bottom third of scores or didn't have scores reported. Another important note for what they considered more selective, selective or inclusive was based on how the institutions allowed students to enroll or the demographic of enrollment. With selective institutions, we're seeing a small number of students participating as part-time students, whereas inclusive universities, we're seeing up to about 60% enrolled full-time and, but with about 40 still being part-time students. So that's where the terms come from. The next component of this was just looking at persistent rates, right? Because one thing with this program is not just getting students into school, it's getting them across the finish line with college too. And what we saw was throughout all diploma, IB diploma candidates, we were seeing a higher than the national average with, as, in regards to the completion in four-year universities persisting. Excuse me, this one for persistence was the students still being enrolled in fall. Yep. And then we'll keep going of this. And then lastly, the last part I just want to point out was the graduation rates and outcomes. So with this, we're seeing across the board, these students being, you know, above national averages, notably for students who received the diploma. We're seeing fairly high jumps above those national numbers. So the findings of this, really just to conclude it, you know, I'm happy to share this, but with any board members also available on the IB site. I really just wanted to highlight this as, you know, the programs that we're doing aren't just for getting kids into college and supporting them with anything like that. All students who are involved in IB curriculum is a great opportunity just to have them prepared for college level work and then see, having them see success in their college years. So I just wanted to take a moment to highlight that. That was my summer reading for this month. Yeah, but and I'll be able to.
So the national average is 49% of students graduating four years. 50% of students who start, that's the national average.
Yep, that's in, this, the study does.
It goes up at least for six years, maybe it's taking people longer.
That's why they measured both with some students in the five-year range, whether in, you know, it could be more coursework, it could be there's need to repeat courses. There's a lot of variables.
That's nearly seven out of 10 finishing in six years. That's, that's pretty good nationwide.
Yeah. The study noted that there were some issues, you know, or looking at just the trends with the pandemic. This has dropped everywhere. And so this is kind of why they wanted to bring attention to this is this is one way we can really keep students on track, you know, as they go through it. So, yeah, but that's, I just wanted to share that with the board.
Great. Awesome. Thanks, Tim. Anything else?
The rest of it will just be during the handbook updates. Thank you.
Anything for activities?
I mean, we're gonna talk a lot about it during, during the handbook. But the one thing that isn't in there is we did change the way that this year families will register student athletes. Everything's gonna be moved into online using this final forms platform, it's called. It's recommended by MHSA. It'll track the COs certifications, athletic registration, payment and physicals.
So we don't have to collect those payments and stuff like that?
Right, right. I mean, we'll still have to collect them, but it'll all be in one place and it should make things a lot.
Chase people down.
Yeah, we won't have to chase people down like we, like we have had to in the past. And then everything else I'll talk about during the handbook discussion.
Business manager, Corky?
So we're wrapping up fiscal year '24. You can see your packet that are most of our budget of funds are either approaching zero or already negative. We've already expensed about $800,000 of House Bill 408 and I anticipate another at least $200,000 to balance the budget between now and the end of fiscal year. So we will use $1 million of House Bill 408, which is what we had planned last, back in August. So at the same time, we've started to look at fiscal year '25 and we are gonna be right there. We're gonna spend another $400,000 or $500,000 of House Bill 408, plus have another whatever is $300,000 or $400,000 of private money needed to balance the budget.
Corky, did you say, did you say we have expended or will expend about $1 million for fiscal year 2024?
So where are those, where are your budgeted funds or the package now? They're already negative. I've already used $800,000 of 408 this year. We, payroll, we have more bills coming in through that fiscal year. Well, we're gonna use another couple hundred thousand easy between now and college, June 30 or mid, middle of July to finish up the fiscal year.
And there's 75 represented in that budget report this, that budget's actual. Negative 15 in the general fund and 60 in tech.
Yep.
Okay. And for, I know for fiscal year 2025, we're looking at about a half a million. I mean, what's your realistic gut check on it? Are we gonna, are we gonna use another billion bucks next year?
Not exclusively of House Bill 408 though.
Me will be a million dollars short.
No, I know that. And I'm looking at just HB 408.
About 475 is what we were putting in the most recent numbers. Corky's here in two weeks. We'll get the budget committee together.
We'll use, yeah, we'll use, we'll use at least that, yes.
Any other questions? Anything else, Corky?
With the private funds, we're anticipating 150 to $200,000 shortfall. So yeah, we're gonna end up at $750,000 of House Bill 408 for next year.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Corky. No committee reports I'm seeing at this time, so move right into discussion and action. We'll accept a motion on that first.
I motion to move to approve the second reading of policy 2162P2 as presented.
Second.
So this was right, clearing up that language from the 504 stuff. That's, this is second reading recommended by MTSBA.
Call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. I'll be shy.
I move to approve the second reading of forms for school gym use and adult education emergency care as presented.
Second.
So this is again, those two forms we went over last time. One for, right again, people saying they would take emergency care for adult ed and then that they recognize a risk associated with the school of JBOs.
What, what is adult ed? Is that like community theater?
Yeah, community theater. There was an art class last year.
Does that cover like pickleball, basketball, stuff like that as well?
That would be more the first one. That when they check out the gym, they'll sign off on that.
Gotcha.
Cause you, if, if something happens, you need to have that consent for care.
Right.
And how are those forms just handed out and collected by the organizer of the event or?
So, well, yeah, more or less. So all of, all of the checking out of our facilities goes through the business office. These will just get tapped on depending on what facility they're using. Unless it's an organization, like if the soccer form, the soccer people check it out, they, they're taking all the responsibility then to make sure that this is all in place.
Yep. And then we, okay, this is new though. We never had this before. Is that correct?
This particular adult ed form? No.
Okay, cause I'm like.
And that came out, yeah, and that came out from the School Boards Association. Like hey, if you have much adult ed. So because the adult ed does get funded somewhat from the school.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think that, just second.
Uh, second.
I agree.
Okay. Call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? As unanimously.
I move to approve the designation to administrator medication for, administer medication form for first reading.
Second.
This came from the same place. We talked about this in our policy committee meeting. I just didn't get it on the last agenda. This administering medication in schools seems like every year something needs to be added or subtracted to that. So when MTSB recommends something like this, I, we need to do it, especially when it comes to medications in schools.
Any questions? Call for a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously.
I move to approve the adoption of Understanding Economics.
Second.
As we talked last, I mean, this book's been available now for anyone to review. I mean, it's economics, so there isn't really anything very controversial to the thought economics. You know, this is that graduation requirement that's just coming to play. It'll become part of the 10th grade curriculum recommended by the teacher and admin.
Which is great. Any questions? Call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously.
I move to open discussion of Bridger Care lessons.
Second.
So we've had a longstanding relation. I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Mitch. I'm here in a second. But we've had a longstanding relationship with Bridger Care to come in and do lessons. And generally, that relationship was really kind of give and take that we could really sit down and work with them and tease out curriculum and everything else. And that's what the board would generally see. They have received a significant grant, which we feel like is probably gonna change their program a bit. And so, you know, understanding that you just got this yesterday, I think we should discuss it now. Everybody can go away and Marlo will be able to highlight the differences. And then everybody, we should go away, kind of really read and engage with the material and come back. And we'll have a recommendation at the next, at the next board meeting. I mean, the one page I would just, before I turn it over to have Marlo really talk about the, the down and dirty changes. On page 32 of the PDF that I sent out, I don't know what page it is or theirs. It got, it's a lot more. Like middle school is nine 50-minute lessons. High school is 13 hours, 13, 15-minute lessons. It got to be a lot more. And in the past, and Marlo can articulate this a little bit more. You know, in the past, we would kind of squeeze it in where it kind of made some sense. You know, now we're starting to talk about 13, 13 hours.
Is that through their whole?
13-hour workshop or one 3-hour workshop? Because I'd see it as two 1.5-hour workshops and one 3-hour workshop.
One 3-hour workshop or two 1.5-hour workshops? Maybe, maybe Marlo can, can shed a little more light on that.
Is this?
So there might be a difference between the two. So let's just kind of turn this over to her.
Okay. Hi, everyone. So we have, Jan and I have been working with Bridger Care, kind of talking through these changes. Really, I think since January, February, just am waiting for them to kind of adjust to their new programming. And so they were awarded a teen pregnancy prevention program grant. So their programs really expanded and they've added, you know, more facilitators. And it's through the Office of Public Affairs or Population Affairs. And the big change is they have to go from evidence-informed lesson plans, which is what we have used. And, you know, for the last four years that I've been principal, we've been using the same lessons in every grade, sixth to 12. We've vetted them, you know, and then just kind of have reused it. Those are evidence-informed. And they have to now go to evidence-based curriculum that's been kind of rigorously evaluated and studied to make sure it's doing things like preventing teen pregnancy and risky behavior in kids. So the curriculum is now much more developed and it's, it's more scripted because it has to be like a nationally tested curriculum. And so they made suggestions with us with the eighth, the middle school curriculum, that Get Real curriculum, nine, nine days, sixth, seventh and eighth, and it spirals. So every year you're getting a little bit more. Their recommendation was this year to start with the middle school with the evidenced-based curriculum. Keep our evidence-informed two-day lesson plans with the high school for next year as they are rolling out and kind of developing capacity and as we're adjusting and then kind of reassess at the end of next year if we're ready to go to those evidence-based longer programs in the high school. And as, as Dustin said, nine days, nine days of curriculum in the middle school, we could start with high school just being two days and the normal programming. So kind of take any questions you have to try to answer.
Is that nine days for each class?
Yeah. Yes, so we envision it going through health enhancement. It's a natural place for it to be. And so, yeah, you're thinking about two weeks of health enhancement being with Bridger Care for the middle school, each sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And moving forward because it does spiral, the curriculum.
Ever, is there ever any pushback with people not wanting to participate?
So there are opt-outs at every level.
There are. So I think that's just something that we do need to consider. You know, we have an obligation to be able to share curriculum with parents when we have anything to do with reproductive health. And if a child does opt out, just considering that's nine lessons, right? They're not with their peers, just factors we need to consider. And the other thing that I wanted to break, to bring up, and I just saw your message, Kara, is it's different in the past, we embedded the lesson plans in the board packet. So it's really transparent. Everybody could see everything. Because these are, this is a national curriculum that has copyright laws around it, we won't be able to embed it in detail in the board packet. We'll be able to get like an overview. And then the hard copy will have to live at the school to be accessible for parents and board members to review. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Can someone read that?
Yeah, it's from Kara. She had to leave.
Oh, I see.
And then she has a comment for when we talk about the athletic handbook.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just can't read that one. Great. Any other questions? Thanks, Marlo.
Marlo, can, so if, if, if we start with the evidence-informed, it would, it would look similar and so that would look similar to now. Are we, and then when it moves forward as positive prevention plus. Are we, and then when it moves forward as positive prevention plus is, which is the thirteen fifteen middle, fifteen minute lessons. Is that kind of what they're moving to, which is this nationally standardized curriculum? That's, okay.
And I think, I think that they have, I believe, and I, I won't want to speak definitively, but they have to be moving towards all this evidence base. So like we can, you know, scaffold and slowly start the evidence-based and keep our evidence-informed smaller lessons for next year. But I think eventually we've got to go to the full program. You know, if we keep, if we continue to have Bridger Care as our provider in high school.
So evidence-based will be six, seventh, eights next year. High school will stay the same as it has been.
For a year.
Now, and then we'll continue to ramp up each year.
Most likely, yeah.
Is that your understanding?
What's your recommendation, Marlo?
Oof. I, I find that, and I just, I think it's a, it's a not necessarily an easy decision, right? So I would, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page moving forward. You know, it'll have impact on the students just in terms of, it's a long period of time. It's evidence-informed, you know, it's very research-based. So that's a good thing. And I think, you know, one of the things they talk about in their packet is, you know, the more opportunity students have to ask questions, the less likely they are to go to more or less reliable sources for information. Which can be dangerous in the world, you know, they live in with phones and stuff so forth. So, I'm happy to do kind of, if you guys want to move forward on this path, I'm very happy to support it. If we want to see if there's another program available through like Bozeman Health, you know, that's a little bit shorter iteration. We could look at that too. So.
And this is something we can look at year by year, right?
Yeah, so we look at it every year and, and really like, thi- this was anchored in, and, and they've been in the school for a long time. It was anchored into, you know, a community member relationship that kind of started the whole thing. And I will say like year after year after year, we have these same conversations at the board because Bridger Care is, they, they serve a different purpose than just what, what we would like them to serve, just as an organization. I, 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 what's that?
What do you mean by that?
Well, I mean, if you look back kind of at their, at their introduction, right? You know, we wanted schools, you know, we tried to decide in schools like here's the right amount of sex ed, so to speak. For our students and for our community and for everything else. Whereas they would like to, they're more of like go af, go for more.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
Just dive right in.
Just dive right in, you know, cause, and like the teen pregnancy, I, I, I think in a decade, we maybe had one student that I know about, we could have had more. But they're also working with other schools in the valley where that might be a more prevalent thing.
Right.
Those kind, you know, that kind of an issue for students to talk about early on often.
So maybe it's not as tailored to what we need necessarily, it's more, it's kind of.
It's becoming less and less because I think that again, they're, they're living now, they've got to live under this million dollar teen pregnancy grant that they got.
All right.
So could we request to have another organization present what their curriculum is?
I mean, we, we can look around and see what's out there.
I mean, just to like have something to compare.
To balance.
Yeah.
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 I mean, we can even look and see, sorry, Matt, we can even look and see, you know, what kind of things can we just have our own AG teacher do according to the state standards, which is gonna be probably less than, than what we've been getting with, with the Bridger Care folks. And then, you know, the other advantage of the Bridger Care folks in the past has been it's an outside entity. So kids are a little more apt to kind of discuss or, or pay attention or, you know, engage with it.
I think we'd want to do it out of house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be my vote.
Yeah, please almost understand. I think Bridger Care is a great organization.
I totally agree too.
As a professional and within the school, and I got no, no problems. I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah.
And then, and then you guys are happy with that moving forward as well?
Does seem like a really lot of time.
Yeah.
I mean, not, if there is that, is there that time in this, in the curriculum for that?
Yeah, I mean, I think as Marlo said, right, it would live in health enhancement, which would be kind of a natural place for it to live.
So it would be like, well, they.
So it would be whatever that is, nine gym periods.
Right. A chunk of their programming.
A chunk of that programming, which, you know, and it would fit under that label of health enhancement. But the, the documents that were in the packet are pretty, pretty good. So we can, right, I'm glad we did it this way.
Yeah.
Right.
Look at it now.
Yeah.
Let's, and then come back to it.
And then we'll see if, what other organizations have availability for those kinds of things. And be able to report back in July and then we can make a decision. What's the timeline for them, Marlo? Can you remind me?
They wanted, um, they wanted us to sign the MOU by the end of July. So we're fine in terms of time. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Marlo. Any other questions? So we'll come back to that.
Next.
Next month. We don't, yeah. We don't even vote on that or anything, right?
Just table it, only table it till July meeting.
Okay. Right, moving on.
Uh, move to approve Athletic Handbook as presented.
Uh, so I'm sorry, there was a, a question in the Q and A, Kate Ivesley, would you consider asking the science teacher to do some of this? What does it cost?
I like, I mean, my personal thought is that I think the kids are gonna be more open to an outside entity and I'm, my experience with Bridger Care is that not only are they sharp and smart on this stuff, but they're good at engaging people. And get them to ask some questions, which I think is positive at that age, because I didn't know it, anything at that age.
A lot of kids won't ask those questions too, to maybe people they see every day.
That would be my concern is that the, the more professional kind of care is, the more the kids are gonna be willing to engage.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. I mean, it's, it's really similar to the kind of discussions you've had with the kids in the past too, right? We can tell them that. Well, we do tell them that.
Yeah. Yeah, they were blue in face.
But funny when someone else does it, they're all sitting there really attentive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not all open, but.
See, yeah, there's, okay.
Uh, so that motion's on the table, right?
Uh, yeah, oh, Daniels, yeah.
Yeah, there were only a couple.
I'd just say that second and I'll do it now.
Okay. So the major changes, I, I put them in the packet and the eighth grade policy was amended by the, by the committee. The details are in the handbook and it, it reflects what the committee talked about. Lettering for golf is updated. That's not our, that's MSA change in the qualifying score. So we had to change that. And then the last one might seem like a strange addition, but really needs to be put in there that, you know, we, we provide the buses whenever we absolutely possibly can. But at times we're, you know, coaches and players and teams are gonna have to be open to taking an alternative, which is, you know, small coach-driven vehicles.
Yeah.
Cause we do, we have run into cases, you know, where the, the bus isn't available and a coach will go out and find five different drivers who aren't approved by the board and then, you know, don't, don't want to really engage in a conversation of, we can't really do that. So that was it. And then Cara's comment was, can you, can you pull that up and read it out loud?
I would like to make a comment that for the changes in athletics, can we add language to support equity for all students? This would be mandated by MTSBA.
I think she meant to put MHSA, honestly. And.
Aren't we obligated to do that?
We're obligated to do that by federal law.
Yeah.
So that's there. And we track that, right? And if you remember, I provided that information back in May. And we were at or better than the, than the requirement that MTS, MHSA puts forth. So I think John did a good job of tightening this handbook up.
There was, okay, there was one thing and I, so it was about rooming together with, you know, students of the same sex. And are we gonna worry about any?
We don't do that.
Not those, well, like, um, you know, four females in a room when they're traveling. But what if we have the, the gender questions that, um?
Yeah, no. So we have, we have had these come up, not necessarily with extracurricular activities because we haven't had that come up yet with our extracurricular activities. But we have had it come up with other field trips that go out of town and we worked it through individually. So we wouldn't, but we wouldn't put people together.
Okay. But I mean, is there any lang, should we have some type of language that protects? I don't know. I could just, you know, there's just so much in the news about the, those kind of conflicts or, you know.
So we, we could.
Understanding.
Is, is what I would suggest then is that we would go to Montana School Boards Association and ask for a model policy instead of outlining it in our handbooks. Like what's a model policy that is supported by law in Montana? That they could give to us, that they could provide for us.
I don't know. Does anyone, do we need to worry about that?
I'm not so sure. I mean, I'm, at least my time on the board, I've only been on the board a year or something, but I like leaving it as loose as we can in the sense that we leave ourselves some flexibility because I think our administration and the athletics and all the rest have worked hard to create equity for the kids and be aware of the unique circumstances we live under here.
Yeah.
I, I hate to lock us in a way that we can't be flexible for our kids that are, you know, perhaps gender diverse or, or whatever.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask because I, I don't know what the, if, if that is something.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point. Matt brings up that it kind of just leaves it there for individual casework. Cause also, you know, you could put yourself in a situation where you, you're starting a fire where there doesn't really need to be one because sooner or later, right, that policy might dial out. People are only gonna participate in
Yeah.
gender-assigned sports.
Yeah.
Right.
And that could be a,
Yeah.
you know, that could be a hotbed too.
Yes.
But I can run it up the flagpole with them and see if they have policy and run it to the policy committee and see what they say.
Yeah, if there's something to look at, always have to look at stuff, you know.
Yeah, but you guys.
So far, I think our administration has done a good job protecting the kids.
Yeah.
We haven't had any problems that I can recount either. So.
I know. It's just you never, I mean, what, you know, you never know who's gonna move in or what's gonna happen.
Yeah, I suspect we'll have to deal with it like all the schools will. We're just a little microcosm of everything else.
Eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if they got something that we can start with, then might as well check it out.
Okay. Thanks, Daniel.
Anything else? Any other questions there?
No.
Uh, call to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously.
Move to approve the IB handbook as presented.
Second.
Um, I'll just comment on this briefly. Uh, so we just do this annual review. Inputs available for teachers we met in May, just to review the handbook. And the purpose of the handbook is just to find a place to put our, document our IB program and make sure that we're adhering to the IB program standards and practices that are outlined in our school's context. So there's no major, this went over a pretty thorough review last year. And so there's only a small update this year just around the language around using IB practice assessments in our classes. So we just, I just updated it to reflect our current practices. Other than that, the handbook remains the same.
So the, like, it was the mock exam.
Correct, yeah.
Just language stayed the same and everything's what we've been doing and.
Yeah.
Yeah, just updated language.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Calling down, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Thanks, Tim. So what's number eight?
To approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five OMS LPHS handbook as presented.
Second.
Uh, the changes were highlighted in yellow, lunch prices.
Yeah.
The hat policy was changing.
How's that changing? I remember there were so many hat policies.
So there was no hats for a long time and then I think we agreed.
You did it one year.
I want to say January.
Yeah.
The students presented to the board and we did a test run, so to speak.
School year.
So now we're just going with it.
Just the language of what can be appropriate and.
And then staff change and, um, the Friday dismissal time, two thirty-three.
Any other questions on that? Seeing none, a call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously.
Uh, move to approve the timetable slash master schedule as presented. And that is quite an impressive schedule, whoever did that.
Do you have a second on that one, man?
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's, it's in there. I don't, take any questions?
I mean, it's very confusing to me, so I don't know what question to come up with.
I know. That's what I mean. It's like, it's pretty amazing.
I was like trying to read through and I was like, okay, well, I know the kids can take care of it.
I know. It's gonna ask gratitude.
Right, exactly.
Questions? Call to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously.
Move to approve the summer reading hires as presented. Do I have to read them?
No.
Yes, did you say?
No.
Oh, okay.
Second, second.
Sorry. So we talked about this the last few meetings as, as part of the Elementary Principals Report. So we're gonna be hosting a summer reading program and we'll be paid point two five A and B for every participating student. Brittany worked really hard to get this in place and we'll realize a small bump in the A and B. I think, Corky, do you know how many students she's got signed up?
I think they're somewhere between fifteen and twenty.
Yeah, somewhere between fifteen and twenty.
That's awesome. And you said that runs a whole summer.
So it starts July first and is gonna finish, I think, August eighth.
Great.
Depending on when, and it's only four hours a day. And I know this looks like a lot of personnel. The only like full-time, every day onsite are the teachers. The assistants are all students of ours. So that's, they're gonna be parsing those duties and responsibilities out. So they'll be split into two groups based on reading ability. So these were targeted students, Brittany targeted students. They'll be split based on reading ability. So they'll have a teacher and then somebody helping.
Right. Is that here in this building?
It's here in this building, yeah. Right in their own classrooms.
Oh, perfect. Sounds very comfortable.
Just so the board knows, and as Dustin said, we do get A and B for that. We don't receive funding for that until fiscal year twenty-six. So we'll count them in twenty-five, we'll get funding in twenty-six. So the school will find, will have to finance this out of our general fund next year. So it's not, we'll get paid upfront for the headcount.
What's it gonna cost us, Corky?
I have no idea.
It's gonna cost us about twenty-two thousand, max.
Is that like?
You feel good about that number, Corky?
I have no idea. I don't have, I don't, I don't know anything about this. I mean.
Okay. You know, I'm just curious.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We'll get two point five per kid.
Point two five.
Well, point two five.
Basically, we're gonna finance two rounds of summer reading classes prior to getting paid for one. It'll be thirteen thousand in the next round. That's what the, like.
This summer?
Yeah, the above will be about thirteen thousand.
I'm sorry, I don't.
But we'll finance.
The revenue that we'll recognize after expenses are paid will be around, we'll calculate that to about thirteen.
And fiscal year twenty-six.
Right.
That's, but we'll finance it for two years before we get any money.
Well, we're committing to financing it for one and then we'll see how it goes if we do fiscal year, you know, summer twenty-five or not.
So this summer, next summer, then money will come the following fiscal year, yeah.
So, but we don't have to finance it the second year.
If we don't want to.
Any money, in any case, until fiscal year twenty-six.
Right.
And these kids sign up for this, they're locked in for the summer.
Yeah.
How many kids are we gonna get signed up?
I think she has seventeen right now.
And I'm always happy to give kids more opportunities to get, to be better readers. Do we have it in the budget? And when we don't have it in the budget, I know that I should, I know the answer to that.
But I, I'm comfortable with it and, and we have spoken, not at length about it, but we've spoken about it. And also OPI is trying to figure something else out too, Corky, where we can add that on to this year's count.
Will we be able to, those kids, those kids count for our A and B, our total A and B moving forward? Like our rolling A and B? So we're gonna look a little bigger even if we're not? That make sense?
It does. So four of them won't add one. If, that's what you're asking me, like four at point two five, then we would, then it would just add one. So we would look bigger.
Yeah.
I, I, that I cannot answer. If that adds on to the aggregate of, or just if it's a separate place where you can put them in and then it just gets worked into your formula.
Yeah, so it's.
Cause we don't, we'd really only be adding four.
At sixteen, you'd add four, right? So that'd be, yeah, whatever that is. So that'd be, yeah, whatever that is.
So it's not a huge bump, I mean, four on, you know, four hundred, it's a, yeah, as a percentage point.
Yeah. It's a percentage point, yeah.
Kate had another question.
Yeah, I see Kate has a question.
She asked if you could tap into any remaining ESSR funds to cover that programming?
There aren't any remaining ESSR funds, are there, Corky?
He said no.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Our ESSR funds have been gone for two and a half years.
So where, where, what part of the budget is money coming out of or getting allocated to, or for the, for this summer and perhaps next summer?
So we'll calculate it right into our general fund.
She said there is funding available until September at the state level? Is that something we can apply for, or?
I, I, I don't know.
Okay. Can dive into that, I guess, we need to. Any other questions?
When does this, this starts?
July first.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm going to oppose.
You're going to oppose?
Yeah.
Passes three to one. Move on.
Move to approve MHSA extracurricular selections as presented.
Second. So from this year, we won't be, as indicated on there, offering girls' cross-country or boys' tennis. We had zero participants in girls' cross-country and one participant in the last three years for boys' tennis. And the participation of that one boy in tennis re-divisioned our girls' team, too, and it resulted in significant expenses for travel. So instead of playing like the Jeffersons and the Townshends and the, you know, the people like we play in basketball, we were in Missoula for tennis five times.
I think Cara was there during graduation day or the day before, wasn't she?
Yeah, well, that was divisionals, but I mean, we played preliminary, you know, we played normal duels, um, over there, too. And again, right, it was, it was one player. And then you can see what, what we had, so everything else remains the same, boys' and girls' soccer, boys' and girls' basketball, boys' baseball, boys' and girls' golf, boys' football, and then boys' and girls' track and girls' volleyball.
Any questions?
The only one I was going to ask, I assume we're still good Title IX stuff since we're killing it, boys' sport and girls' sport?
Yeah, and they're really kind of mad, yeah, I mean, that's kind of the, the overarching umbrella of how they would calculate out Title IX. Now, even if we had another one, it really boils down to that formula, like, for participation, that it remains equal among your population. But yes, we should be.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're sensitive, Cara's earlier thought.
Yeah, totally. And as soon as we get, you know, we can, we can run a quick, uh, we can run that calculation in the fall, just to see what we have. We'll have boys' and girls' soccer, football, that's probably our biggest participation season, and volleyball.
All right, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Corky, do I need to have him sign that today?
No.
Okay.
No motion for the consent agenda? Just, uh, make a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion for the consent agenda.
Uh, second to approve the consent agenda?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. All right, our next meeting, we have scheduled for July ninth.
I will probably be able to come in virtually, but depend, depending how, where, where I land.
Where you going?
In Coopera.
Cool. That does it. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.